Okay, good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to tonight's Rhinebeck Town Board meeting for December 12th. Would have a please stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, indivisible, infinite, and justice. Thank you. I will make a motion to approve the prior minutes of our regular town board meeting of November 28th, 2016. May I have a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. I'll make a motion to approve the prior minutes of our November 29th, 2016 special town board meeting. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I'll make a motion to approve the prior minutes of our December 7th, 2016 special town board meeting. May I have a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
This is the employment compensation.
It was our special town board meeting last week.
This was the one that we did health benefits?
Yes.
I thought I dissented.
We haven't voted on the manual yet.
No.
Oh, yes, we voted, we did vote for the manual. That's for, that's for a po-.
Oh, this is employment compensation.
We're still working on benefits.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Are there any announcements?
Well, the zoning building permit planning process committee. It's still be, we're meeting tomorrow and then next week for a couple hours. We're interviewing people who've gone through the process. I've been getting telephone calls. We've been doing some interviews over the phone. Lots of people have lots of things to say about those processes.
Great. It's a good, lot of work.
And I think some patterns are emerging that we could at least improve on.
Alan, how are you identifying the people to interview?
Well, the first set of people were people that had successfully gone through the project process in the last six months.
Uh huh.
So they're all recent graduates, so to speak. And then we're also talking to a number of professionals that appear with, in behalf of applicants on a regular basis, like some of the architects and the lawyers and builders. And anybody listening, if they want to participate, call town hall. Talk to the town clerk and he will get us together.
Thanks. I also wanted to announce that town hall will be closed on Monday, December 26th, and Monday, the 2nd of January, in observance of the holidays when they fall on a weekend. We move it to the Monday. Any other announcements or?
Maybe one small thing, and not so much an announcement maybe, but a thought. I wish for the life of me I could remember who I was talking to. I just remembered this, but since it's my last meeting, I'm not, at least at the town, town board level. I don't want to forget. I just want to put this on everybody's radar. I spoke with somebody recently who said that the town of Red Hook does not have a senior van or services, transportation services, like we have here in the town of Rhinebeck. And since we've been talking about sharing services and all, you know, I thought it might be, there might be an opportunity there at some point that whomever takes over the agent committee might want to talk to Red Hook about and see what kind of, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? We have a public hearing tonight for the 2017 Hillside fire contract and the 2017 Rhine Cliff fire contract. I'm opening the public hearing. Does anybody wish to comment on the public hearing? Shall I close the public hearing or would you like for me to leave it open until we vote?
When are we going to vote?
Well, we could vote now or later.
How do these compare to the?
They're the same.
... contract?
They're the same. I will make a motion to close the public hearing. Hearing no comments from the public. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I will make a a motion for resolution 2016-269 for our preliminary accounts payable abstracts 12, 52 checks totaling $129, 574, 51. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I will make a motion for resolution 2016-270 for capital projects abstracts one check totaling $463. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I will make a motion for resolution 2016-271 for our budget transfers and amendments. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? I just want to point out that we're going over in our hours for our zoning administrator and our code enforcement officer. And, you know, we know that there are not enough hours for them, so just raising, raising it for everyone to think about. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. We're increasing, I guess, planning fees?
It was an increase in revenue to cover, expected revenue to cover what we, we're a little up on revenue, so we made an adjustment to cover what we're going over in.
Okay, so it balances, we think?
Yeah.
The revenue and the ex.
We hope so. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2016-272. May I have a motion for the 2017 Hillside fire contract? May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. May I have a motion for resolution 2016-273 for the 2017 Rhine Cliff fire contract?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I just have a question.
Yes.
Who determines the boundaries between the fire districts?
I don't know, but they were determined a while ago.
Like a hundred years ago.
I don't know.
The reason I ask is because there's a series of lots down by the river.
Right, that are bifurcated.
That are half, half and half, which seems wrong.
Well, we've gone over this. We would need to get a survey. We would need to, there's a lot of work in adjusting a fire.
The first question is who's responsible?
We are.
But we can change it?
Yes.
Oh, okay. All right. That answers the question.
You're welcome. Resolution 2016-274 for town hall use application, Museum of Rhinebeck History. May I have a?
Wait, wait, we didn't vote on that.
Let's go back and vote on the 2017 Rhine Cliff Fire Department contract. Do I need to bring, it's, it's still on the floor. I guess we did have a little discussion about, yeah. All in favor of the fire? Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Okay, let's try it again. I'll make, I'm asking for a motion for resolution 2016-274 for town hall usage application fee for the Museum of Rhinebeck History. May I have a motion and a second? Okay. Elaine, and a second? Is there any discussion? What day of the week is this?
Saturday.
Okay. I just know we have court during the week. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I'll make a motion for resolution 2016-275 hiring Lori Doty to audit our end of year audit.
She does it every year, doesn't she?
May I have a second?
Second.
Yes, she does it every year. Any other discussion? I mean, she, we, we, the town board used to audit and we decided that it would be better to have an outside audit, who's an auditor, audit instead of us auditing.
I think we shouldn't order ourselves.
Yeah. I don't think we should audit ourselves, so.
Well, you know, we never audit it ourselves. We audit it in various departments, so we're never auditing ourselves, but.
But we're not auditors.
Yeah, probably the cost is minimal, $3,000, so.
Did we vote on this?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. I forgot a, I just want to bring you up to date with the zoning review group. Oh, we have some new business. I'm sorry, let's do the new business first and then we'll go back. There's two new businesses here. Resolution 2016-277, intermunicipal agreement with Dutchess County for snow removal and ice control services. May I have a second? Well, can someone get it on the floor? I'll make the motion. Thank you. It's pro forma. This is the, this is the contract that the county sends out for us to plow their, their roads and they're asking for five one-year extensions. Barry has asked us to approve this change order extension of the intermunicipal agreement for the provision of snow removal and ice control services. Please sign and return.
Is this a one-year extension or a five-year extension?
Five-year extensions. I guess it's for one and then it's renewable?
Yes.
No, but it looks like it's one-year section one.
We'll approve it every year, is my understanding.
Yeah.
It's the same, yeah.
Fire September 30, 2017, may be extended for two additional one-year terms upon mutual consent. It sounds like extended just a year.
It's an amendment to an existing, it started in 2013, so they're amending, I guess, the last year of it.
Do we get paid? This is for us to plow state roads?
Yes, there's, all that's, all that's in agree, all that's in place. The rates are already in place and agreed on. When we plow for them, they pay us. They plow River Road. They, they turned it, they took it away from us. Didn't take it away from us. They took it back and don't pay us for that anymore. But we still plow part of Morton Road for them, which is a county road.
It's county road.
Yes.
It'd be nice if they fixed county road.
It's a whole other issue. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I think there's another new piece of business.
I have one.
Yeah?
This is resolution 2016-276, hiring information technology vendor.
May I have a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second it. We're open for discussion?
I want to just say what it is. Our current vendor has quit as of the end of the year. And we've been looking at sharing a vendor with the village because of the shared hardware that we both use. And the vendor that the village uses is a professional computer assistant of Red Hook has done a good job, I think. And they've come forward with a proposal and this resolution accepts their proposal. Basically, they would maintain the shared hardware, keep it up to date, do backups, do email for us, plan to get it to work, hopefully. And it's all in here. The idea, we would be spending somewhere around $594 a month, which would be our share of the shared maintenance. And I'll explain how to get that share. $160 a month for email and backup to email.
This is a lot more.
It's more than what we were paying, but I don't think we were getting valuable what we were paying. The other part of this, the one-time charge of approximately $2,000 that would be required for additional hardware, for backups, and having their engineer get up to speed or resign and be able to take it over, which I think is also.
Have you looked at the budget at all? Are we going to have to? Could it take it out of contingency? It's a little over what we.
It's about maybe $300 or $400.
A month. All right.
Is there going to be a contract?
They made a proposal, which I have, which I have on the car, actually, but I assume there'd be a contract here. They want it, they want it, they want to do it for a year.
Oh.
We would, we would sign an agreement for them to be, to be the thing for a year.
Shouldn't we actually look at the contract if we're voting on it?
We could. I don't, I just want to, I just want to go to the point where we, we say we're, we choose you, let's.
Well, you've done all the work. We've, you and Gary have.
We have a proposal. The whole proposal has all these numbers in it.
The, the, to sign a contract, it will have to come before the board anyway, Joe, so.
Okay, yeah, because it looks like this is approval of a contract resolved. The board agrees to hire and super authorized to sign, execute any documents necessary to effectuate the agreement, but I think we actually ought to look at a contract.
Okay. Let's change, we'll change this to.
To proceed to obtain a contract.
Yeah, okay.
Then maybe by the next board meeting, they can give us a contract so we can see it.
Yeah, this, the, what?
Table it?
Okay, I'll go and give us a contract.
Just get, you know, get it to Warren and get his input on it.
Okay. We have another meeting in two weeks.
So the, we're tabling this. It's open, we're tabling it. The zoning review group, which consists of myself and Ed and Melanie Moore and Sharon Sherrod and Art Broad and Scott Bergen, and have been asked by the zoning board and by Jeff Irish, who owns a solar company, to start work on our solar law allowing small-scale solar farms. We have, Warren's already worked on a law with Hyde Park that we're going to look at and Jeff's company, Jeff is also on our zoning board of appeals, has a nice, simple boilerplate, you know, this law. My intention to get the committee together and to workshop it and to bring it to the board early in the new year. There are, I think, four or five residents chapping at the bit to get small-scale solar farms online. And I'm talking one acre, one and, you know, one and a half, maybe two acres. Right now, it's not in allowed use and it's next to impossible to get a use variance. Solar is something we want to promote. We want to promote solar farms. We want to mitigate visual impact. There are large riding rinks and barns that want to put them up on their roofs. They're not allowed to now because of the law, so we're going to start on that this year and get it to you in the new year. There are some more substantive issues that we'll be dealing with, but this one is the first one. I think that some NICE certa grants run out in July, so we want to try and allow people to capture this.
There are a number of, in terms of the process group, there are a number of, there's a fair amount of feedback from the users that really relate to the zoning law rather than the process so much. Just questions that don't seem to have precise answers in the zoning law, and I'll give you a list.
So those will have to go to the zoning review group?
Yes.
Yeah, and then we'll work on law to amend them. Yeah, I think.
The whole area of farming, we punted on that, but the farming sections of our zoning law don't jive with the ag and markets law. My recollection is that we passed it, but we said you would go back and harmonize.
In 2009? You mean with the comp plan?
No, just these amendments did not bring our zoning law into.
With ag and.
With ag and market. Yeah, it's the 2009, there's been amendments to ag and market since 2009.
Just if you could, you know, we, keeping a running list of all the things we need to look at.
That's one of the issue. Art Broad is aware.
Yeah, it's on our list.
It should be.
We have home use office, you know, home office usage. I can't remember the list, but, you know, solar farms was one of them.
Hey, Elizabeth, can you explain to me more about solar farms?
Solar farm is a community aggregate where like one person who may have a piece of land that's perfect to put up arrays of, you know, PV ground mounted or a huge riding rink can put up enough to power 12 houses. So it's a business, a business, and it goes into the grid and you can buy into it and buy back, but it's not allowed now under our current zoning. Just, I, I don't know, an oversight, it wasn't, when we did it, it wasn't happening, you know, and it's because a lot of uses have to benefit that, the property, not, you know, so we need to write a law to allow it. We're, we get letters every month, you know, and we got dozens of them this year, from people who are specking with, you know, the power companies who say, "We are working with so-and-so to put up 10 acres of," which it's not legal and I don't know that we would allow a 10-acre sol- solar farm because of the visual impact, but, you know, solar farms need, we need a thoughtful law to promote and allow them.
So would, would residents that live in proximity of the, of the farm?
You don't even have to be in proximity. You can, you can buy, just like now, you know how you can buy your power from different sources?
Yes.
So it's like.
Okay, so they would have people have a choice, they could buy this.
Yeah, yep, yeah, yeah.
One of the schemes allows you to buy solar panels as if they were going to be put on your house. And, and then, but they're put into the farm and then you basically get credit for whatever generates as if it were yours on your house.
Wow.
You know, we were looking at doing it on our landfill. It's a public works project, so it's all prevailing wage, but there are companies that have models for that, so it's not only what potentially could go in our civic one or civic two zone. This would be zones to be determined throughout the town, probably anywhere with the correct, you know, I'm imagining. I mean, I don't know what the committee will find, and so I just wanted to bring you up to date on that. We have another item on here that is not on our agenda, missed it somehow, but we have a workshop with Michael Richardson to go over our employees' benefits package. Can I make a motion for a quick break because I have to get my, I mean, not package, our benefits and compensation manual? Can I make a motion?
One other item of new business. Can we set a date for the workshop on the workforce housing for sometime in January? Because it takes time to organize and maybe we can do it on a Tuesday night at some point in January.
Sure.
After, after the reorg meeting, which is a nice. And I think Warren is usually free on Tuesday nights and then I can.
Okay. I am away the 16th through the 26th of January.
Through the 25th?
Six.
Want to try for the 10th or the?
Friday, the 27th? I don't think, no. Yeah, you want, the 10th or the 31st would be fine.
10th or 31st. Okay, let me see what.
There's a planning board meeting on the 10th.
Yep.
On Tuesday, the 10th?
Yep.
Oh, we could always meet downstairs, I don't know. Or we could do 31st. I can try for the 31st.
Let's shoot for the 31st. That gives us plenty of time to plan. You guys all right with that?
What time, 31st? I'm coming back from a trip. Later in the day?
Yeah.
Five, six?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
What time you want it? Do it 6:30?
Five o'clock?
Five o'clock, so.
Let's see if Warren can make it. No, 31st. No, we said 31st.
Yes. This is open space affordable housing.
This is a workshop on the proposed law.
Town board workshop. Okay. We are going to go into a workshop to work on our benefits and compensation manual. Before that, I'd just like to make a motion for a brief recess. May I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll be right back. Then we're back, I don't even know, I, I don't, we're, I'm opening up the meeting again. We are here for the workshop with our labor consultant, Michael Richardson, and we're discussing the update of our Town of Rhinebeck compensation and benefits manual.
Hey, Elizabeth, can I go back for just one second? And I'm so sorry, but I meant to bring this up under announcements before and I forgot.
Sure.
I received an email from Susan Booth Biznick or Binzik. Remember her from the deer management control?
Yes, yes.
Okay. She sent me an email to let me know that Cornell has just launched a website called deereadvisor.org, D-E-E-R-A-D-V-I-S-O-R dot org, designed to help communities tackle deer-related issues. She says it has a lot of important information and links and other things that might be of interest, and since this came up from a constituent, I also contacted Susan to let her know about this, too.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okey-dokey. We're on page, what part and page, Michael?
Joe, I have a question. Go back on vacation.
On vacation, on the accrual.
Which, which part and page, please?
Well, it's part three, but it's the version with the accrual.
If it deals with the accrual, it's part three, page one, and the accruals are found in 3.1.3.
I don't remember whether we adopted it or not, but this is a question from Shelley as to how it works in the transition.
You're saying to front-load it because they're going to start off the new year with no time, correct?
Yeah, I'm going to use the word advance.
Is that what you're talking about? How do we advance it?
Yeah, so they would advance. How, how would that work?
We're not sure. I have to look at exactly if anybody has any carryover or not. Normally, when we do this, you have to advance at least six months. And so that would put somebody where they have somewhere around, say, 40 to 60 hours. If somebody wants to go on a week's vacation, they need to be able to take that advance. And so you don't want to give too much of an advance because you want to get the system working, but on the other hand, you want to make certain that nobody is harmed by this.
If we make a mistake, can we make adjustments to it? So Michael is going to sit down and work it out with Shelley and we don't know, we don't know what's going to happen.
All the people just have to know that nobody's going to be inconvenienced.
Yeah. Nobody's going to be inconvenienced or robbed of vacation time.
That would happen.
So.
The six months advance, is that every year?
No, no.
No.
It's just a transitional period. You get them into, just so they have enough to, whatever plans they have be met and then they can start building their.
Okay. I guess we, we have to remember to talk to the union about this, too, when we meet with them this week. When are we meeting?
Well, this.
Hmm?
What do you mean this?
Vacation accrual.
No, they do it their own way.
They're going to do it their own way? Okay. Is that your only question?
Yeah, but again, since I haven't seen this, I want to compare it to what we did in the last draft, just to make sure that it's implemented as we agree.
Okay. What are, what are the three decisions that we have to make to your mind?
Part six, page one. Yeah. I believe that on the eligibility, that the discussion had closed, because this literally is cut and paste, I mean, cut and paste from the highway contract on the eligibility.
I'm sorry, part six, page one?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm talking about six point two.
Yep.
Eligibility. Again, that's out of the collective bargaining agreement.
So this is a change?
From what you have.
Yeah. Yeah.
But it is what is. And it's the 20 and 62, unless you have 30 years of service and then eligibility for age is 55.
This is a change from our existing handbook?
Yeah, our existing handbook has 20 years and 55. This is a change.
And what we did.
So we're changing from 20 to 30?
Well.
Will I hear that?
And age.
Let me explain it. Right now, there's, however you look at it, there's two factors to it for eligibility. One is age requirement and the other one is service requirement. Remember, age and service. What you have in your current handbook is the age requirement is 55, the service requirement is 20 continuous years as a full-time employee. In labor negotiations some three years ago, we negotiated a change, and I remember the time because we were also working on the employee handbook, that there was effort that that would serve as a template. You never know because policy is set by the board. And so this is what we negotiated, that it would be on the age would have to be 62, and the service would be 20, unless you have 30 years of service and then the age goes back to 55.
This doesn't really affect anybody that I know of. The only thing I'd like to add in here is full-time benefit eligible.
It says that.
Where?
One, have at least 20 years of continuous service as a full-time employee with the town.
We have an employee who is given full-time status for vacation and holiday and not health insurance.
Again, I understand that situation. Whatever you're doing now, remember back on very, very first page, it supersedes everything before you. Right? So whatever you pass here, that's going to be the way it is.
I know, but I don't think.
Other clause or ring.
Well, here's a, we have a resolution here where somebody was given full-time status for.
Medical.
Right, so that, what?
It clearly says, but not for medical.
Okay. So when does the clock start for medical?
Again.
When they started receiving benefits?
The then-current town board.
According?
Decides what is.
According to this handbook that we will be passing, when will the clock start for?
20 years of full-time employment, and full-time employment is defined as a minimum of 35 hours per week.
Okay.
Now, again, again, any then-current board sets policy.
Well, but this.
Whatever you've done in the past is not binding on this.
Well, this says, after much discussion, Denny motioned and Bob seconded to reclassify Joan Winnie to full-time since she's averaging 32 hours a week. She will be entitled to six more holidays and six time, but no health insurance coverage. So how does this affect?
Again, I would, I have to say that most people say that's very ambiguous language, it doesn't, you have to decide what it means. If this person, you need to decide, does this person have full-time status for how many years or not? You can't ask for an interpretation to pass, you need to make a decision, what is?
So that's one decision we have to make?
Well, yeah, I think you should be clear about it, because this is saying that, and this is out of the labor contract language, again, not that it has to be applicable, because it says as a full-time employee, does that make that person a full-time employee for the purposes of retiring medical? That's ambiguous. You need to answer that question as policymakers.
Well, that's why I want to say full-time benefit eligible.
Well, but that's eligible for some benefits.
Full-time health insurance benefit eligible.
So you're benefit eligible, including health.
Do you guys agree with that or no?
I'm not sure what it's doing. What are you saying, that that resolution did not make that particular employee benefit eligible?
Right, right.
So that the clock didn't start running?
Well, let's clarify benefit, it made it eligible for some benefits, but not all benefits, so that's why you have to go like.
Right, I'm talking about medical, that's what we're talking about.
You did not allow that person to participate in that.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
It seems to be only for holidays and sick time. Seems it is.
Such an odd thing to do.
I think it was done for holidays and sick time.
It was done kind of in good faith or a particular thing, but it was ambiguous.
It's still, like, across the board, it just seems like an odd thing to do. Like, first of all, to take somebody who averages 32 and, you know, can call that full-time, I mean, I like standards, because I feel like when you have a 35-an-hour week standard and up. I like that, it's clean and easy. But when you start determining that somebody who averages.
We have a lot of little finicky things here.
Our thing, and to not offer health insurance.
What you're doing now is, as you recall, for your part-time employees, you give them benefits on a pro rata with 35 equals 100 percent. So you're giving it that, but you spelled it out. Back then, what they did, if somebody was below a threshold, they said, "Okay, you're good."
Yeah, yeah.
And, and again, they were trying to do a good thing and they just weren't really clear, and now it's, some years later, raised a very complicated question. We always try to write clear policy, try sometimes.
Okay.
So what?
So.
You can put this, 20 years of continuous service as a full-time benefit eligible employee, including medical insurance.
Okay.
I must say, I feel uncomfortable making a decision on this tonight, I haven't even read this.
I don't know that, I don't know that we are making a decision. This is one of the things we have to.
Okay, it's one of the issues that's floating around, okay.
We have to make a decision at some point.
It's been filled out on me.
Yeah, this is, we've been, yeah. In Joan's mind, she believes she can retire with full benefits from when this started, even though she wasn't eligible, 20 years from when this started, even though she wasn't eligible for health benefits.
When is the date of this thing, 2007?
But what we're saying here too, a change here is to be eligible, the retiree must meet all the requirements, one, 20 years.
After this resolution, did that person work 35 hours or 32 hours?
32 hours.
Does that person work 35 hours now?
Yes.
What year did that?
2007.
2007, so we're talking about seven years.
Six or six and a half, so it's more.
No, it's almost to the date, because it was March of 2007, and this is April of 2000, so it's seven years. So this 6.2.2 is matching the bargaining unit.
For the exception of these words we're putting in about medical benefit eligible.
Well, I thought we're, we're holding on that.
Well, that's what it would be, though, if you do it.
We're not making a decision on that.
On what?
Well, I mean.
Doesn't the medical eligible mean that we made a decision that it's really running from 2007 for that person?
Yeah.
Right, so I'm saying I.
Well, do you want, do you, you don't want to make a decision, do you want to make a decision, do you want to make a decision, do you want to make a decision?
I'd like to see what it's going to cost us, but I'd like to see the specific numbers on that employee.
I feel like this is more to do with policy than numbers.
Yes.
I do too.
I mean, we have to deal with policy, the numbers, I mean, that, we, I think we've already determined, you know, that part of the problem, the numbers brought us here, but I think at the cross of the problem, the thing that needs to be resolved is the policy.
Right.
That's driving the numbers.
I think it's the right policy. If it's only complicated by this. If we can separate, if we can separate expectations on the part of the employee because of the ambiguity from the new policy, I'm fine.
I don't see it as being ambiguous, it's very, to me, it's, says no health benefits, so the clock doesn't start. If you're not, if you're not eligible to get health benefits when this is passed, how would the clock for retiree health benefits start from here?
Well, right, because the whole heading here is medical insurance for retirees.
Right.
Which the assumption is whenever you're 6.2, the heading, so whenever you're benefit eligible as a full-time employee is when that clock starts. What Elizabeth is saying, I get where you're, I get exactly what you're saying, Elizabeth.
I mean, we have.
That's saying there's no health, the health benefits weren't given until 2007.
You know, we have other issues of this, of people who started and were part-time, and then when they became full-time, they started getting benefits.
I have to say, almost universally, we're.
Is there a difference between getting medical and then getting medical after retirement, when, when, when that kicks in? I think we ought to talk to her, maybe individually, to see what, what her understanding of the deal was at that time.
How do you see it, Michael?
You know, maybe this is the kind of thing that a compromise might be in order.
How do you see it?
Well, I, I see this complicated by this memorandum, and Elizabeth showed it to me a long week ago when we were working on this, of course. I mean, it's understood when we put in that there's full-time benefit eligible employee, and there's, you don't come across these hybrids. You're either eligible for the package or you're not eligible for the package. And so voila, upox this resolution that like, well, it's a hybrid. I believe that the intent of the language, if you read it, again, I'm interpreting, it was to grant an employee a certain amount of paid leave, personal leave and sick leave that they wouldn't have been getting under the then-current rules. Now, again, today, you have a pro rata on part-time, so you don't need that kind of rule. And now, but I can't say what was in that person's mind on what they thought that meant towards their retiring medical. But I would just say it would be rather peculiar that part-time status was clicking a clock towards your retired, post-employment benefit. Peculiar doesn't mean that it's impossible. Again, what I have to always say to policymakers is you are setting policy with taxpayers' money, you talk to the employee, do you go out and talk to all the taxpayers? You don't, you have to make a decision. There'll be taxpayers that say, "Why did you do that?" And there'll be some that'll say, "Well, sure, go ahead." It's not an easy job when it comes to thinking these types of decisions, no. But you, you need to set policy for it, you need to interpret that language. It really doesn't matter what's in the mind of others.
Yeah, we have to decide that ourselves.
Well, you know, there's a question of fairness to beside it, and if you're saying it really depends on what the intent was, then one would normally, unless you're Scalia, you would ask Mr. Dempster and whoever Bob is for some background.
No, you'd have to ask all the board members, because again, in labor.
Pardon me, I can't hear you.
In labor relations, we come across this constantly, that's why we go up to arbitrators. One of the first things that an arbitrator will say is, "Who are the parties that were in that room when the ambiguous language was crafted? I want to know, first of all, what was in their minds, and more importantly, was there, quote, 'a meeting of the minds.'" So just to go ask one side, "What's your side of the story?" All right, that's legit. You have to go find out what the other side of the story, are those people still around?
I don't know who Bob is.
So, I mean, but that's how it works.
I think McGuire was.
You come and ask me what's in my mind on a benefit, I'll tell you what's in my mind.
You know what, I, it doesn't, it doesn't matter, because it's a policy.
You have to set the policy.
I think the policy's the right policy. I think the situation with this one employee, we can deal with as, as, if we decide to do something different, we can do it. And that is correct, if you go back again at the beginning, this town board and any future town board has the right, says that, to make exceptions. You just have to have a resolution to make an exception. I've written many resolutions that says, whereas this says that, the town board hereby makes an exception in this particular case for this. Done it thousands of times.
Just out of curiosity, back then, when that email was written, was there this policy in place that somebody, it was? So in other words.
I'm going to say, what policy?
Well, was, was there a retirement policy in place at that time that said, once you retire at such a certain number of years, you get full benefits?
No, the policy, I think Michael said that we had a policy for part-time employees over 20 hours and they got half benefits.
No, that wasn't, that wasn't done until 2012.
Pardon me?
That wasn't done, that wasn't in 2000.
I guess what I'm wondering.
No, what I did, what we did in 2012, Elizabeth, was that.
Oh, that's the union.
We reduced the 50 percent for town hall employees to, I think, 47 and a half, because we reduced the benefit to 12 and a half.
What we, what was in the book in 2000, and we have the 2000 book there, and this is out of that page, to be eligible for coverage, the retiree must be 55 or older and must have at least 20 years of full-time continuous service with the town.
Yeah, it almost says much of the same line.
In addition, the employee or highway superintendent must be eligible to receive retirement benefits through the New York State Retirement System.
Which is required by the controller, so, so the language.
But we also had a policy, I don't know what, when it came in, that part-time employees would get half the medical benefits.
Well, that might be for an actuarial, but this is for retirees, as Elizabeth said.
Yeah, there's no retiree, there's no benefit for part-time, retirement benefit for part-time.
For part-time.
To be eligible for coverage, the retiree must be age 55 or older and must have at least, and then it said 10 years of full-time service with the town.
I guess in my mind, one of the things that I'm thinking is, if that understanding was communicated then, and that person knew that they would not be eligible for the post-retirement benefits, then I would think the clock would have to start when that person came on full-time and knew they'd be eligible for benefits.
The more I listen to us, the more I think we ought to pass the right policy and then deal with that, with that one employee offline.
Right.
Can we do that, Michael?
Yes, again.
Offline? I don't think we can do anything.
It was not offline, you have to have an official resolution, but I'm going to, I'm going to read this, 1.1.2, on the first page. The Compensation of Benefits Manual should not be interpreted as a guarantee that the policies and practices in it will be applied in all cases, further, the town board may, at sole discretion, make exceptions to any part of this compensation benefit.
And PS, that was in our original benefit, that was in.
And you'll find it in any good mail, because again, you need to have the flexibility to make exceptions. You have to do it by resolution and you need to articulate what you're doing.
Okay.
But you need to have that flexibility, you need to say it right on front, because you, you are the policymaker.
All right, so what are the other questions we have to decide here? Retirement, so we, 6.2.2, this is continuous service as a full-time employee.
Well, I put in the words, so it says, of continuous service as a full-time, comma, and I love hyphenated words, medical benefit eligible employee with the town. So what's been inserted is the comma, medical benefit eligible.
That's ambiguous as to whether it's medical benefit at the time of retirement or when.
No, it's not, it says 20, you have to have, you have to be eligible for the benefit for 20 years of continuous service. It's not ambiguous.
Is that where you're putting it?
Yes.
Yeah, right there. At for employee.
Right there.
Full-time employee, medical benefit eligible.
Because you could be, you could be eligible.
As a medical benefit, okay.
You could be eligible and not take it, and then when you retire, you could get it.
You could have had a buyout.
Yeah.
In fact, we even say that under this house.
Yeah.
You may have to be eligible for coverage at the time of retirement, you don't actually have to be.
Is this the correct policy? And then we look to make an exception?
Yes, yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
Pardon me?
Is this the correct policy?
I think so.
Joe?
Yeah.
And then we look at whether or not we want to make an exception?
All right, I'm going to take you through six. I'm going to take you through 623, though I have not heard any questions on this. So this is on the spouse. Coverage is also available for the retiree's eligible spouse if, one, the spouse was eligible for coverage under the town's medical insurance plan on the retiree's last date of employment with the town. And two, the spouse was not eligible to receive comparable medical insurance coverage under another plan. So you are, quote, "the insurer of last resort there."
Why are we continuing to cover somebody's spouse, though? I don't understand that. And they don't even work here.
Let me, that's a good question, one. Number two is spouse. Apparently, in 2006 or 2007, because there was no marriage equality, we passed a resolution to recognize domestic partnerships. But it never made it into our manual, and I don't have a copy of that resolution on hand.
But is that necessary now? Because now we have-
We have an employee who is not married.
Well, it's, it's covered now, because for active employees, you put in domestic partner.
We did in the-
So the new manual, you'll be okay.
Okay.
In the other manual, we did that.
I don't think, I don't think you did the other manual.
We didn't do it.
That's water under the bridge, because under this one, you're doing it.
Did we do it in, it wasn't, it's not in our current manual?
I'm going to that point.
Do we have a definition?
You don't, you borrow the state definition. That's financial interdependence for one year.
I thought we put it in, in employment practices.
Financial interdependence for one year? We're going to, we want to, do we want to do that? We want to use the state's language?
That's, that's the state policy.
No, I understand, but for one year?
Why not?
Because you can get married. Some people get married just for benefits, or to like, get on a lease of an apartment or-
Yeah, I know, but to think, I mean, to think that I could be dating somebody and then a year later, put them on my health insurance?
No, you can't, you can't be dating this type of financial independence.
Well, if I-
You have to be cohab-
Move in and I quit my job and live with them, and then I can get-
And share a bank account, share some utilities, yeah.
Right, so there's, there's a, there's an incentive, I hate to say it, though, but it's true. We're creating an incentive for some people to do that.
It's, but it's, I, you know, I don't think, no one's getting married for health benefits in our five employees, and they've all been together with their significant-
Oh, no, I don't meet people here now. I'm saying going forward. I'm thinking going forward, how to prevent, um, how to prevent that. I'm just thinking how to protect the town from, I mean-
Well, let me, let me opine on this just a little bit. I mean, you are right very much, Elizabeth, that before the marriage equality, quite often, employers allowed the domestic partner. Now, again, I like to talk about Maris College, because I was their HR guy there for a while. They had a policy that same-sex domestic partners were eligible for their medical insurance if they showed the one-year financial interdependence. Opposite-sex were not, and the reason was, get married. The day the case, the marriage equality act passed sooner after, they changed their policy, get married or not at all, otherwise, no domestic partner, get married. Now, again, go back a few pages here in this handbook, we've allowed now, in the language, domestic partners to be covered on the services of medical insurance. They become a, quote, "dependent." In this language right now, you use the word spouse, you don't use the word domestic partner.
Right, okay.
So this is saying domestic partners are not there. Now, that begs a better, bigger question of, can they play in the game at all? Now, you might say, yes. Next question is, how much are you going to pay? Right now, the policy is-
I guess, can I just interrupt? So, hold on. I guess it doesn't matter to me, domestic partner or spouse, although if you're not married to someone, if you're just a domestic partner, you don't get somebody's social security or retirement benefits from the state, do you?
No, you don't. In, in fact, in New York State, there's all sorts of problems. You may not have visitation rights if they're in the hospital, unconscious, and there's all sorts of problems there.
And not only that, if the spouse has a great insurance policy, or if the domestic partner has a great insurance policy, that's likely not to be available to the employee of ours, who is just a domestic partner.
I guess I don't want, I don't, I don't-
But aren't we talking about-
It all depends on what your will says.
Aren't we talking about the tail of the dog? And isn't the dog, the main question is, should we cover the spouse? And I think that's what the main issue is.
Actually, I'd say-
Let me finish, Michael. I'm used to insurance policies in retirement that cover spouses. I believe, and Ed, you would know, whether spouse, your spouse is covered on your policy.
She can be if she wants to.
What?
Yeah, she can be if she wants to.
And I believe I'm covered by my wife's insurance policy. So it's not unheard of that you work for a number of years and your spouse is covered. It's not an inherent concept.
Are you initially, life insurance or health insurance?
Health insurance.
What?
We're talking health or life insurance.
Health insurance, right. Health.
Health.
Health insurance.
Health.
Health for retirement.
Yeah, but do you, Joe, if you were just domestic partners, would you be still on our policy?
I, I don't know about that. That's what I'm saying, that's the tail of the dog. Why don't we solve how we feel about the spouse being covered for medical, and then the tail is domestic?
Okay, wait, I think Joe's right.
I have to wait, well, wait, I have to wait.
There, I said it.
Did you say that? What? Kind of quoting-
And it's recorded also.
I, Joe's right.
I have to say, it's not, if you want to use the dog and the tail thing, it's not the coverage, it's the premium.
Yeah.
Coverage doesn't matter. You can participate in plan. Remember, you can participate in plan until you're 26, or you just ain't going to pay for us, 22.
Well, have we decided that? We haven't decided what we're doing on that.
But that's just it. Participation is not the issue, it's how much are you paying. But right now, right now, what you have, you see in the map, it's 20 years, 100%.
Yeah.
For you and your spouse, regardless of if your spouse had a job, had earnings, had anything.
Okay.
And so if you change that, what a lot of employers do, first of all, they don't cover this.
What do you do about, what do you do about, what do you do about the family? Say you've retired here after 30 years with the town, and you're 55 years of age, and you have kids on your policy.
Well, again, that's for you to say as a town board. You could ask the question, again, are there two family earners or one? Because if there's two people in the family that are making money, and I need to actually exempt myself here, because I raise my child as a single parent, I was sole, sole earner. But if there's two family members that are earning money, why does this person have no obligation to pay for anything? Your employer doesn't pay, they don't pay, nothing, it's a free vote. Now, that story does start to change when that person goes away, and you only have one breadwinner. And you're not going to write a policy that says, single parents will cover, two earners we won't.
Okay, just, okay, I-
But that's where, where it's going to come back in, they say, listen, we're going to do 50/50.
Okay. Here's the question, but if you retire, we'll keep paying for your kid until the age that we decide when we don't cover your kid, right?
But this doesn't say any of that. All it says is-
Can I just get an answer to that question?
Right now, all these spouses are covered, dependent children are uncovered by this one.
It says they're covered, that doesn't mean we're paying for their coverage.
Not yet, that's in the premium part.
Okay, good, okay.
But even right, even right now, even the kids aren't covered.
But this is the sleeves out of our vest, isn't it? I mean-
Well, that's why, when I said to Joe, Joe said, it's the tail and the dog on the coverage. It has nothing to do with the coverage, it has to do everything with the premium. How much are you paying?
So we haven't gotten to that yet.
That's the last page.
Shall we go to the last?
Well, what, but we're not going to retire, if you're retired, we're not going to pay for your, your children?
I don't believe you do now.
Not covered.
I thought we did in the CBA.
No, I think we just cover for the spouse. I'd have to go back a little.
Can you look? I think we cover the family in the collective bargaining unit. Do you have it?
Yeah, you, right now, your policy does not cover dependents, sole spouse.
In the collective bargaining agreement?
I'm sorry, no, you have them.
I asked for the collective bargaining agreement. So right now, did it previously cover children?
I'll let you know when I get there, but I, do you know, are you-
The coverage section.
Are you covering any, do any retirees have children that you're covering right now or not?
Yes.
Now?
I believe so.
It's in your policy.
In the collective bargaining unit.
No, I was asking-
No.
I'm reading, coverage retiree's spouse, looks like spouse. Coverage is also available for the retiree's eligible spouse if the spouse was eligible for coverage under the town's medical insurance plan on the retiree's last date of employment. The spouse is not eligible to receive comparable medical insurance under another plan. In the event the retiree predeceases, the retiree's eligible spouse-
I'm sorry, is this the old, the old agreement, Joe?
No, this is the current, uh, union agreement.
Right. Uh, oh, it's the-
This is the union agreement. An exception set forth below, the town will make available the same medical insurance plan-
But no children.
As it makes available for active employees who are members.
The language that is written in 623 is the same as the previous 623.
Well-
So, right now, you don't have any contractual or otherwise obligation to, uh, utilization to pay for the second.
Right. So you're saying some aren't being paid?
Yeah, why do we have this, then?
I don't know, because then there will be these-
There's a family policy here.
Apparently, you do quite well.
Well, we negotiated it right back for a purpose. These words aren't going to hit idling.
Yeah, no, I-
We have someone who retired from the collective bargaining unit in 2013, and we've been paying a family policy.
I have no idea why people don't read these documents.
All right, then we-
How they're off.
I mean, these are, these are, there's a legally binding contract that's been negotiated, and I don't know why you don't follow it.
What was it before 2013? Did we change it in 2013? I think we changed it in 2013. I think, I think that's-
We did, but the contract became active in 2013.
Yeah, but I don't know if we changed this provision, Michael, or it's always said that.
I have the old document.
But, but you can't change your policy, so this person retired before our current-
The current contract is effective July 1 of 2013.
And he went out July 30, 2013.
So he shouldn't have been covered, family-wise.
Well, wait, no.
We'll have to look at that.
He went out the 30th, and it was effective July the 1st.
He might have gone out under the old contract.
The contract is, it was a retroactive contract. They got retroactive pay, retroactive benefits, retroactive everything. There, there's nothing, I, I mean, I'll go see if there was an exception clause in the last paragraph.
Sounds like he needs a retroactive letter.
Yeah. Not a good one, either.
Right, I mean-
Sorry.
This collective bargaining shall be effective from January 1, 2013, through December 31, 2016, unless otherwise agreed to the lawyers. I have other labor contractors say that even though the contractor's going in, that any changes that were implemented after a cer, or before a certain date, or after a certain date, were not-
So the retroactivity took this at-
The whole document takes over, and again, if you want to set-
Was the retroactivity?
Elizabeth, I want to be clear about this. If you want to set aside something, saying that these changes that are in here are not going to be applicable before, I'm making up a date, August 2 of 2000.
Michael, will you put, we have to talk to the union about this, this week, when we-
Well, you're going to contaminate your negotiations.
How do we deal with it, then?
It's a separate matter. I mean, again, when you don't follow the contract, you get a grievance.
Joe, will you help me look at it this week?
Yeah.
You don't do it in negotiations, that's the wrong venue. You call the union guy in, you set up a separate meeting, and you deal with it.
All right, will you help us with this?
Yeah, I mean, just saying, if you don't follow the contract, they file a grievance. Now you want to follow the contract?
What do you mean by that?
If we don't follow the contract, we get a grievance.
Right, so you should follow the contract, like that, right?
Yes, that's what he's saying. He's saying that it's, boy, they.
And the bread goes to both sides.
Exactly.
So is this money owed to us, or?
Well, I never saw anybody go recover it.
Yeah, right.
I mean, it's the town's mistake, frankly. Like, somebody, nobody caught it, so I don't think they should be that person.
Yeah, we had a situation like this with somebody else, and they didn't go retro.
20 years, we didn't catch-
Yeah, I mean, it's a good thing we're catching it, is the thing. We've got to stop it from happening.
Yeah, at least you can stop it, stop it.
Okay.
What now?
Well, okay, so what we're trying to be clear about here is that this policy and none of your policies in retirees, first of all, retirees weren't covered, I'm going to start my speech over again. Dependent children were not covered under your previous policy, they're not covered under this policy either.
Okay.
They can participate, of course, in the ACA.
Got it, got it. So now we're still talking about spouses.
Right, so I just covered the first one, that's the living spouse. In the event the retiree predeceases, the eligible spouse, they may continue the coverage, provided they pay the full cost of the plan. If there's a legal separation or divorce, then it all stops, except for that under state and federal laws, which we commonly know today as COVID.
Okay.
Now, see, word for word what's in the labor contract, and it's not contrary to your prior policy.
That's fair.
Now, the insurance plan here is what insurance plan are you going to make available? So you're going to make available the same medical insurance plan and prescription drug plan as available to active employees. Now, these are for your under-65 people, right?
Can I just, I'm sorry, can I just go back and ask a question on the coverage? So does this with the retiree's spouse, does this mean we're paying 100% of that spouse's coverage?
No, grievance comes later.
Oh, okay, we're not dealing with your media. Okay, got it, I'm ready for insurance.
Michael, what are the other questions we have to do?
What you're coming up on.
Okay. Did we decide on children? We're paying for all children up to 26?
No, no, no.
We're not.
Retirees, no children.
Right, for employees.
But the, well, wait a minute.
No, you, you pay up to 22, not after 20.
How, when did we decide that?
Uh, about two weeks ago.
Is that true?
Yeah, it's in here.
Yeah, I think we changed, we, we had the discussion of-
It's in right here, eight, go back to part five, page one. 541, section 3, a dependent child over the age of 22 may enroll in the plan with the employee paying all the additional costs of the premium.
Okay, I, I remember we talked about this, and we had employees here who said that this was what it was before affordable, uh, before, uh-
Yeah, because that's how it worked before Obamacare. Yeah, because that's how it worked before, before the car. And once they feel it, it'll go back to-
What's the story with the, the union? If it's a union person retires, uh, do we, uh, pay for, oh, I guess we don't pay, we only pay for spouses.
That's the issue, is that-
Yeah, okay, you're saying, under this language, we only pay for spouses.
Well, as the contract is very clear, they cover employee and spouse.
But only to the extent of six two six, right?
You know, I'll tell you later.
All we're talking about is how they can spend that money.
Now, on, on plan, so we're on six two four, the very bottom of part six, page one. We're okay with the under 65 people, we know what's happening there.
I'm sorry, where are we?
Six two four.
Six point two point four, turn. Uh, part six, page one.
So the first sentence, paragraph, are for the pre-65 people. Now, when the retiree or the retiree's eligible spouse meets the eligibility required criteria for Medicare coverage, primary coverage will be provided by Medicare. That's the way it works.
Yep.
At that time, the retiree and/or eligible spouse may be required to enroll in a Medicare supplemental policy made available through the town. That's exactly what you do now. Now, the word "may" is in there because you don't really know what the structure is. They may be allowed to stay in the old plan. Right now, they're not, they go over to your Medicare. Now, this is the one, and I have it red inked, if you have this online. The town will not reimburse an eligible retiree or the retired spouse for the cost of Medicare Part B premium. Currently, you're doing that. So that's, that's-
Well, we didn't decide that we were going to do this.
That's what I'm saying.
It's not that.
It's why it's in red.
Right.
Well, I have black and white, okay.
It's, it's, it looks like a different color.
It's light gray, actually.
It's the lighter reading.
Light gray.
Yeah. So the, so how much are we talking about for Part B, Tim?
A hundred and four dollars a month for your current people. As you know, there's an age shift now, it goes up to 121.
The total amount we pay is fifteen thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars and thirty-six.
What's the, but what's the, um, retire me, what's the Medicare benefit? That's 320 a month, I forget.
Four hundred.
Four hundred.
Or five, I believe. So, so again, most of us, I think, understand Medicare, uh, the Medicare supplement has two parts. Uh, one part is your D, so that's around a hundred and eighty-seven dollars, and that's the C, so that's the underwriting of the A, and it's part of it. Uh, and so that, I believe, is around two hundred and some. Your total sum, Shelley told us last time we were together, was four hundred and five thousand.
That's the total sum?
Yeah.
Yeah, not B.
So-
That's for your Medicare supplement.
So the Medicare supplement is 405, and B is a number?
Where you, uh, depending on your age, where it's either 104 or 121.
D is, is drugs, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's where your supplement's coming in on that one.
Part D or part B?
B is drugs.
B.
But we don't pay for, oh, that's the, that's the four-
Right, your supplement is paying for an enhanced A and an enhanced D.
B, right.
A and D, and then we have an additional payment for part B.
Yeah, B, and B universally has always been retirees' responsibility. Now, the question is, do you reimburse them? And some places do, some places don't.
Look, I'm loath, all right.
Well, Joey, Joey tells me you're reimbursing annually, some places you reimburse quarter, so.
Right, I guess I'm against changing this policy. We're talking about fifteen thousand dollars a year, and-
Well, wait, that's only for Town Hall, that's not for, that's not for-
No, I think that's-
No, no, here's the whole list of everyone who's retired. It's mu, it's, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. We have one, two, three, four, five, six singles. We have two doubles.
No.
Yes, and we have one family. It's much more than fifteen thousand.
I think you're wrong. You know, it, the payments are in our current abstract, uh, that we just signed off on, uh, the annual payments, and, um-
But, but look. What are you saying is fifteen thousand? The supplement and B?
No, just the B.
Oh, just the B, yes, yes, okay.
Just the B is fifteen thousand. That's the only thing we're talking about is changing. And I, I don't like the idea of, uh-
But we're not talking about, are we talking about going forward, or?
Yeah, forward.
Okay, so you want to pay the part B for everybody?
I think so. I, yeah, fifteen thousand, what you're talking about is taking money away from people who are not very wealthy people, and depend on, uh, you know, the, for single coverage, and I think everybody is single now, except one, uh, couple.
Two, two couples.
I thought one died.
No, we had four couples, and we had, sorry to say this year, two, two people passed away. So we went from four doubles to two doubles and two singles.
Shelley told me it's just one couple, but the other couple died.
No, we have, we have this.
Right.
Double.
Right, right.
And here, here was a death, and here was a death. These were the two deaths.
Right. Hey, Elizabeth? Just to, just to, I'm sorry, Joe.
No, it was, it was here.
Michael raises a good point.
What?
When, when you meant, go ahead, Michael.
Well, we often, again, my family's a Medicare family. Joanne's on Medicare, she has no pension. Uh, I'm soon going Medicare, I have no pension. These, we, we often say that people that are 65 and older are poor. Public sector employer, employees retire with a defined benefit pension plan. Most of these people are making 50 to 60% of what they were making when they left employment.
He's right.
But that's not a lot.
Plus social security.
Yeah.
Okay, oh, social security.
You know, you say they, they're, I mean, they have to watch what they're doing. They should, hopefully, they had investments, they have social security, they have a defined benefit pension plan.
I'm in that whole picture you're talking about. That's me.
And, and, so, I, I-
Do you pay for your Medicare B, Part B?
He's a teacher.
Yeah.
Doesn't pay for anything.
I'm sorry, what was the answer to that?
He's a teacher, he doesn't pay for, they have the best pension.
Well, here, let's be clear about Part B. Everybody pays for Part B. It comes out of your social security check. The question is, is are you reimbursing or not?
Yeah.
Are you reimbursed, you are.
If you retire under my shit, you have to do this.
Hate to lose you now, sorry.
That's their rule, Joe. If you retire under my shit, whatever you say. But I just, you know, it's just, you know, we have to be clear that, that, that-
All right.
They're not poor.
A misunderstanding that people are poor.
They're not poor.
But, well, you say that, Michael, but you can't compare yourself to, uh, somebody who worked-
I, I would say, I would say that probably somewhere about, um, 80 to 90% of your retirees that are paying property taxes have Medicare, and nobody's reimbursing their Part B.
Yeah, but that-
The people that are paying the bill don't get that.
I understand, but the question is, how comfortable are we for fairness? I understand you're an advocate of, uh, cutting back on retiree benefits because of the taxpayer. And I'm certainly, my record is-
Yeah, you're wa-
Fiscally conservative.
You're wavering here, you're wavering.
You're awestruck.
I mean, you're, you're, you're-
You're awestruck.
Yeah, but I think we got to be fair, and, uh, you're talking about fifteen thousand dollars.
Well, wait, we're talking about twelve hundred dollars a year per person. Talking about twelve hundred dollars a year per person.
How many people?
Um, well, it doesn't matter, it's not a huge cost.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, fifteen thousand total.
I'm with Joe.
Why do we, why do we have to treat the current retirees the same way as future spouses?
You know, here's the thing, people go into jobs like this for the benefits package. The time off, and, you know, the benefits and the quality of life, so, I mean, nobody here is making a hu- huge salary. Or, as we've seen from our parity study, even a, even a competitive salary for what they're doing.
Again, Elizabeth, I, I think, so it depends, what are you going to do on the base premium? Because the base premium is where the money is. Because there, again, your liability right now is running out of a ten dollar file.
It's what we're paying here, about that.
Okay, I-
Yeah.
I guess the only thing to really think about is, um, you know, what, what could the changes be in the future? Because if you start, and I feel like this happened a lot years ago, and we're sort of paying for it now, when, when you're in better times and you start to be generous, you know, coming from a good place, a right place, and then later on, something happens, and, you know, the economy changes, you know, God only knows. Um, and then you might be forced to scale back on those benefits, I mean, I don't know.
I think we can, I think for the five people we have, I think we can afford this benefit. We're talking, are we talking about spouses, or just?
Well, that's the next question.
Okay, I-
But before we even go there, but, but I guess that's where I keep getting confused. That's fine for the five that we have, but what about going forward? I guess, like, I keep going, I'm thinking ahead, I'm thinking about-
Okay, well, some people will drop out, and new people will come in.
But that's my point, when the new people come in, does this policy apply to them? Or is it just grandfathering in the, of the people that exist? If it's grandfathering the people that exist, that's fine by me, but I'm just questioning the-
I, I, I think it's not a huge benefit, and I think it makes the job more attractive for the, you know, I mean, we start people off here at twelve or thirteen dollars an hour, after-
But that's changing too.
After, yes, after they've been here for like 20 years, they're up to eighteen or nineteen dollars an hour.
Right, but we put the money in contingency with the, with the goal of raising everybody according to market rates, so that will change. That was the old way of doing business.
But it's market rates for municipal jobs, not market rates out in the real world.
Well, market rates out in the real world, too, people are no longer getting pensions and benefits, which they get in the public sector, so, I mean, you have to consider it all.
All right, uh-
So, so the question is, if we have to say the town will reimburse an eligible retiree, but what about the retired spouse?
That's what we're talking about.
No, I think we're talking about the employee, and I say we, I would like to, I support this employ, you know, the, the-
Well, because this could be, the, the town will reimburse an eligible retiree, but not the retired spouse.
But not the retired spouse.
Part B.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
Me too.
Okay.
Well, I mean, what, it went over my head.
We're going to, we're going to pay Part B for the retiree, but not the retired spouse.
But we pay that now, so we're-
This is a change in policy, going forward.
Yeah.
I don't know why we should be changing it, and I was just trying to look at the union contract as to what we're doing.
The union contract's silent on Part B, it'd have to be interpreted that they get reimbursed, um, that it says that the employee's responsible for X percent of the premium. Now, some of your retirees go out zero, some go out at 15%. So we use an example here, for example, if somebody was paying 15% when they left, they pay 50% of the premium going out. So without too much argument, they should be reimbursed, that person, for 85% of their Part B, because B is a premium, quote, it's a premium. So right now, uh, it says that if you went out the door at 100%, when you get 65, you'll go into the supplement, the town's going to pay 100% of the premium. That would tell me 100% of Part B.
Right, we are now paying-
But then it would also say if I went out the door with 15%, I would only be reimbursed for 85% of the premium.
Right.
Right now, you don't have any of those people. The only retirees you have right now, I think, are out at 100%.
We are now paying for the spouses of union members.
You're paying 100% of the premium.
Part B.
But there's only two.
For Part B, yeah, there's only two.
Yeah, you're paying-
And there may be one, uh, well, okay, there, I don't know.
One or two, let's leave it at that.
Yeah.
But the, why not say for, for existing retirees, we'll pay the spouse's Part B?
Well, we're not changing existing, I mean, that-
Well, you know, you have to be clear about it, because this is the policy.
Yes, but it'll, it'll say for hired or, or elected before date, or, or hired before date, it's not, right?
Yeah, okay.
I mean-
These are people that were hired before, or hired, so, so, again, anybody who's hired after January 1 of 17 will never have retiring medical.
How do, well, we haven't decided that.
Well, first of all, it's 20 years from now, before anybody, 30 years from now, for anybody to be eligible.
Right. So they might have, they will have retirement, we just don't know what it would be.
But you're saying, under GATT, be 45, you would be-
Hires who retire don't get any medical benefits?
If you hired somebody today, 20 years from now, this wouldn't be there. Universal. Yeah, well, when the IBM, you're a little bit-
We're the-
Here's the girl.
They, when they dropped the-
We are not IBM, and people don't make the same money that they make at IBM.
I really don't.
I mean, I'm, I'm not supporting doing away with all retiring medical benefits.
Because if anybody you hired today would not even be eligible for this for 20 to 30 years-
Thirty years, yeah.
And you have to carry this liability on your books, and, and I don't know what you're going to do with the premiums, but I keep on going back, you're carrying a $300,000-plus liability. And if you don't do something about this post-deployment benefit, you're going to be just like Detroit.
Michael, we, we're aware of that, but we're, I mean, I'm not going to support the retiree nothing for medical benefits. I support new employees having a different model, but I'm not going to say you work here for 30 years and then you leave with nothing.
I think there's a difference between new employees who come in with their eyes open to whatever the policy is, and existing employees after certain period, uh, somebody comes in with their eyes open, uh, you know, and that's one reason why we, uh, are reluctant, at least I'm reluctant, to hire a full-time person who will get benefits. That's why we try, try, I think, to hire part-time people, so we don't encourage, we, we don't run up this contingent liability.
That's kind of funny to me for two reasons. Because in theory, really what you're saying is, to do what, what Michael is suggesting we do, but not to put it on paper. Number two, I would rather see us hire people full-time and pay them well, especially when we look at the turnover at Town Hall, because we don't have, we have two, we have too few people doing too many tasks, and we keep losing people because we don't want to hire them full-time. So we're creating this other problem, but you're already really agreeing with Michael because, but you're just doing it by not hiring people full-time. Why not change the policy and do it the right way, and just acknowledge the truth of what's happening?
But that's a different question.
Yeah, no, I-
You, you can't, you can't pay your current people good money for them, they're spending $300,000 for somebody that doesn't work for them.
Right, and then you're saying, Joe, you should change the policy.
We're not paying $300,000, that's kind of an exaggeration.
No, it's not, Joe, I sent you the math, I mean, how can you say that? If someone's aged 55 and lasts until age 75, you've spent over $300,000. That's, that's not a joke.
Per person?
Look, I sent you those tables, those are not jokes.
And that's per person.
Where are you coming up with $325,000 for somebody over the next 20 years? You don't have that in your budget.
If somebody retires at 65 years of age-
No, if somebody retires right now, if somebody leaves you at age 55 on a two-person plan, by the time that they are 75, you will have spent over $325,000.
We have nobody eligible to do that.
Yes, you do. The person that's operating your retire, that you want to grandfather, will cost you $325,000 in post-deployment benefits.
Michael, your numbers are dependent large part of the situation.
Seven percent.
Yeah, but I think that's unrealistic, I don't think-
The real number is, is 12%.
I, I, I don't think health benefits are going to go up 70%.
So it's a quarter million.
In the past, yeah.
Well, I think it's a lot less than that.
Well, Joe, if it's zero, if it's zero, it's a quarter million. And do the math, take 12 thou, take $18,000, because that would cost you $18,000-
Okay, you know what, you can keep-
For 20 years, you're at $360,000, no inflation.
We have some, we have somebody who, who, who has been working here, uh, for 26 years, and now we're going to change this in the last four years.
Yeah, I, I don't know how much more I can try to do.
I understand, but I, I-
It's $325,000 in post-deployment benefit, period. You've got to tax people to do that. What would you do with $325,000?
Okay, you can keep saying it, I understand it, we all accept that. Now we have to decide what we want to do.
The numbers are right.
I understand the numbers, but I cannot, we've had somebody here for 26, 26 years, who can retire in 55, six more years. No, 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 has to go longer, because she started so young. This is the only job she's ever had, and now with this end in sight, we're going to say, say, oh, well.
Well, first of all, it's confusing to the public to hear that 55 is retirement age. Most, most public think that 65 is retirement age. So now I can stop working at age 55, get 50 percent of my check from the state retirement system, and you're going to pay 100 percent of my medical insurance, including my spouse's, for the rest of my life.
My problem with...
That is a policy that this town has had in place for a million years.
How do you justify...
That it's the cost of doing business, and we promised it to our employees. And now, like, could you look at yourself in the mirror, if someone has accepted this for the past 25 years and say, we've changed...
Nobody's saying turning it off, what we're saying later is, reduce that down to about $2 or $3 for compensation.
Well, going forward, I'm in favor of that, but I am not in favor...
Going forward, 20 years from now, you've already spent the money.
Okay.
See, my problem with this whole discussion, my problem...
And then that's the cost of doing business.
My problem with this whole discussion is that you're bargaining with the union over these proposals. And I wouldn't make any decision on these till we see how that works out, because to start changing it now, I think you're undercutting your own position. And let's see where that works out, because that may tell us where we should be going for the non-union people.
You know, Joe, it'd be different if we weren't giving our employees anything, and the union, and so it was a zero against what the union wanted. But it's not, we're giving our employees 100 percent right now, and the unions are being asked to take less than 100 percent. If we show the way by giving our employees, their other employees, less than 100 percent, then at least we got a bracket to talk about, you know, a difference. Whereas today, we got no difference. They can come in here and say, oh, you're paying your employees 100 percent of their health insurance.
Okay, let's just...
But that's what we're paying now for the union, but we shouldn't.
We don't want to, we shouldn't.
But that's, it shouldn't be. Right, and you'll see where the contract ends up.
Okay, let's, let's, let's just decide what we want to do. Like, let's just decide what we want to do. I don't think that we have to match what we're doing with the union negotiation. I think we're fine.
I disagree.
Okay, you disagree.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay, so we, kind of where we were at the last one, let's decide where we are. I want to, at least, I am looking at the list of retirees that we have here, and one can retire at 55 with 30 years of service in, in six years.
Is that going to happen?
Yes.
Maybe, you don't know.
Well, she could stay longer, she could, she'll actually have her 30 years at age 54, so...
You can't go before 30.
Right, I know. So I do not want to tell this person with six years out of 31 left that the game has changed. I don't...
Sir, nobody's, nobody's saying the eligibility's off.
Michael, you don't need to explain it again, I understand, I, we're the, we're deciding here.
They're going to do 100 percent.
I am, I am for that, yes. She's too much in the game to change it. That's my opinion. It's a board decision, we'll see what the other people say. I am not, yeah, that's the decision that the, it's, that's where I stand on it, so I don't know. I see three separate areas in our current town hall employees in their retirement. I see someone who's six years away, and then I see other people who won't be able to retire Well, actually, one's eligible now, but I think he's waiting three more years, right?
Yeah.
Gary?
But I, I mean, that's, we'll talk about that tomorrow, but I think he, I think he's winding down, I think he'll be ready soon.
Okay, so he's in sight, too.
Yeah, he's in sight.
At the 20 years being 62.
Yep.
And then there are...
When are you measuring it from?
Gary started in 2002, oh, I'm sorry.
No, the town took it over, I thought.
I have a question about that, too, Joe, you're right.
In 9, oh, 9.
He was, he was with the state first, the State Cemetery Association, and then he came to, was employed by the town. The question is, what was that date? Was the two, is I have a question here, too.
2002.
2002 is when he started working for the town?
I thought it was later.
I...
But we have to ask, is it later?
Do you want me to text him and see if I can get an answer from him now?
No, doesn't matter.
Maybe we have to come back to that.
So actually, he wouldn't be eligible to retire into 22.
That's like five years from now.
Right. And then I see another group who are really eligible to retire. Well, are we saying it's 55 years of age, or are we, with 30 years, and 62 with 30? 62 with 30. So our next two batches wouldn't be eligible to retire...
It's 62 with 20.
20.
And 55.
You knew what I meant.
And I do, but I just wanted, for people listening...
So...
You know, you could always bargain with the union for 62, and get rid of the 35 years, or 30 years.
I think we should do 62.
What?
I think going forward, we should definitely do 62. I think 55 is a little, slightly insane.
But again, this is subject to bargaining with the union.
No.
Right now, in the labor contract, we have...
It already says...
We have that, we have that.
That you can do 30 years at 55.
I understand, but you can always bargain, that's what you're doing.
No, I'm saying, we have that.
We have what?
We're talking about the company you got.
We already have the policy that you can retire at 55, can I speak, please don't, let's have one conversation. We have, what we have with the collective bargaining unit is that you can retire after 30, at 55, only if you've had 30 years of service.
And what I'm saying is, get rid of that, and bargain that you can only retire at age 62 with this...
We tried to bargain that, we didn't get it the last time.
What?
We tried to bargain that, that's why we didn't get it last time.
And the, and the whole thing is, too, is it's really hard, physical work, and bodies break down, you know?
But you have the 30-year trump card, that's what we bargained last time.
Yeah.
Maybe you'll do better this time, you got, you got experience on your side.
I don't know about this.
But that's...
Okay, so our next...
...our potential liability.
So, Michael, if you don't pay 100 percent, what's the alternative?
Well, if you want to turn the page, you said there's, like, there's two unanswered questions back on the first page, so let's turn the page to the next one, because this is the third question, is what do you pay? Go ahead. And there's those that have retired before today, those who retired after...
I want to stick with this conversation, and the conversation I have is that if we're talking about our current town hall employees and retirement benefits, we have two people who I think, you know, they're retiring in 2022, both of them. I think the cemetery got taken over in 2002.
Yeah?
Yes.
In 2006?
Two.
2002.
You think it's 2002?
Yeah. So Gary will have 20 years on 2022, and he'll be 68, and Shelley will have 30 years in 2021, but she won't be 55.
But she can't retire until 55.
Right, she can't retire until 2022, and, and neither can he with full benefits. I don't even, he's not talking about going that long, he's talking about going sooner. But it's his decision. I think that I am, you guys can do what you want, I cannot change the benefit expectation for those two people, it's too, it's too soon, it's too close.
Well, what about, what about the other three? You feel that way for all five?
No, I don't. I think that there are, our next two employees, and depending on the one issue of when the clock starts for Joan, can't retire until they're, have 30 years in, and that's in 2036 and 2037.
When you were talking about Bob, he wants to retire before 62?
Or actually, that's 20, I'm sorry, that's...
Before 20 years.
20 years.
One can retire in 2027, and one can retire in 2036. Bob who?
Or, uh...
Gary.
Gary.
I don't know when he wants to retire, but he's not eligible until 2022.
When he has 20 years?
Yeah.
Yeah, because, again, you go back to the highway, which I don't think, you have to have 20 years to get in this game.
Yes.
So you leave, I guess I'm confused at why you're going through this, that both of these employees are eligible.
Because what I'm saying is, I don't, I would support...
They qualify.
Yes.
Nobody's not being qualified.
Well, I'm all for, I think we have to grandfather the two people who are close to retiring, in with the full benefits.
Well, that's, that's the premium question.
Yes.
That's what we're up to. We want to find out what it's going to be, if it's not 100 percent, that's all.
Okay.
It may not be that bad if it's not 100 percent.
Well, if it's 100 percent, you know what you're...
Well, I know what that is, but what if, for less...
Well, I mean, here's what I wrote down, but you got to turn the page.
Yeah, go ahead.
And so, we're looking at those who have already left, and those who are going to be in the future.
Yeah, see, I don't agree with this, because it's after 2016, and I think it has to be for a...
No, no. This is, first of all, the people that are already retiring, that have retired, are you going to continue to pay 100 percent to them?
Yes.
If the answer is that, then Joe, here is the...
I mean, wait, do all of you agree with that? We're not cutting people who have retired benefits.
I'm not, I don't definitely agree with that.
We have some 88-year-old people, you're talking about cutting their benefits?
I'm not cutting them, I'm just reducing them.
No, here's what it says, seriously.
Okay.
Read what it says. It says that for employees who retire before December 1st of 16, the town will pay the full monthly premium of the medical insurance and prescription drug plan for individual coverage, and 50 percent of the additional premium cost for the retiree's spouse.
So we would cut the...
The change is, it used to be 100 percent of the premium for the spouse.
So all you're saying there is that the person who worked for you, you're going to continue to pay them free.
They're going to get coverage.
And this is 50 percent of the additional premium cost. So that's only 50 percent of the additional, you're going to cover, so that person's still free. The additional plan is going to be 50/50, they're responsible for half the tax.
Okay.
Right, but, Michael, isn't the change is for the addition...
The spouse.
Yeah, we're reducing it from 100 percent to 50 percent.
Of the additional cost.
Right.
Right, that's...
Do you want to do that?
The retiree is still free.
I think, I think we have to, frankly, I mean, I just feel like if we don't do something, none of, this is not easy, I mean, none of these decisions are easy. But I honestly, I can't understand why the town ever gave a spouse...
Because it used to be so inexpensive.
100 percent for the rest of their...
It doesn't matter, we got to push forward.
Right, that's my point.
Okay, I...
I think we're talking about...
I'm pulling the board where we are.
Hold on, maybe we can discuss it a little bit more. I think what you're talking about is, for people who retired before December 1, 2016, either one spouse or two spouses, that's all we're talking about.
But you only have one spouse.
What? I think we only have one spouse.
We have two. We actually have three.
Well, I think, I think it's either one or two.
Hold it, wait, there's, because this doesn't apply to the collective bargaining unit. We only have one person this applies to, one town hall employee and, and her spouse.
You're not talking a hell of a lot of money here.
Well, I think her spouse probably gets Medicare.
Yes.
I'm sure it gets Medicare.
Yeah, we do, there's someone in the front. Okay, so just to show you how my mind works, what if we have one of these single guys, who's getting 100 percent, and he gets married?
But you can't get married, you have to have been married before you retired.
Okay.
We already thought about that. Good, good thinking.
Good for you, geez.
Because it's just another thing, yeah.
That's right, wow, I just, you know.
And I kind of think that particular spouse is quite elderly.
Okay, so let's just, are you in favor of changing, are you in favor of this change? E.F. Fernandez?
I am.
Okay, Joe?
No, I keep it at 100.
I keep, let's keep him.
Ed, what did you say?
Yes.
He wants to change it, do you want to change it, Ellen?
No, not for one person.
Me neither. So the change, we're not taking, we're not taking it away.
Let's pick the battles that actually...
Yeah, because what would we be saving, $1,200 a year to get rid of it? Or $600 a year?
No, it would be more, because this is the supplemental policy, supplemental policy, it's more.
Are they individual, or are they family policies?
They're individuals.
Doubles. Oh, two doubles, yeah.
No, two singles.
Two singles.
The way it reads is, the town will pay the full monthly premium of the medical insurance and prescription drug plan for the retiree and the retiring spouse.
For anyone who retired before...
December 1st, 2016?
I think it should be January 1st, 2017, or December 31st. It doesn't make any difference.
Now, when the retiree passes away...
Yeah.
Then the benefit leaves the spouse.
Yes.
Under a previous provision.
That's under a previous provision.
So it's a limited amount of time we're talking about.
Okay, and then the...
So I'm going to get January...
Now we're down to 626, which is where we were the last time.
Okay, wait.
626, that's...
I, I will not support, now, you, I would like to grandfather in current employees. Does anybody agree with me on that?
All current employees? You mean, this language doesn't mean anything.
Right.
Might as well delete it all, because...
Okay, let me just poll the board. Do you want to grandfather in all current employees?
When you say all current, now are you referring back to these five on this list?
Yes.
And you've done nothing.
I guess, you know, I'm having a real problem understanding the wisdom of it. I just, I feel like...
If you leave this in place, it just keeps going forward, right?
Just, yes or no, we've, we've talked about it. I, I at least think we have to grandfather in fully two people. Michael, calm down.
Alan?
That's where you get the money.
My thought is, that I'd like to deal with the two people or three people in a special way, but we don't need to do it in this thing. I would, I would...
We do, actually.
Well, I don't think so.
I do, I think we just need to set out the time limits. If you're retiring by this date, then you get that. If you retire after this date, then you get this. And I think it's pretty simple, it's like, if you retire by 2022, that's the sort of cutoff date.
Well, the problem is, is going to encourage people to retire that year.
They won't have the time, they won't have the 20, or the 30 years.
But what if they do, and they, but they could stay?
They don't, look at the thing.
Well, I mean, somebody who's 55 years old... It's a different number.
I know.
That's $2, she can make $3, she can make $4.
We're having one discussion here.
Look, I think it's a question of, of language, we can accomplish the language.
Let's think about what we want to do.
We're not encouraging people to retire, but whenever they retire, if they were hired before...
We do it by their...
A certain date.
Yeah, we do it by their hiring date, not their retiring date.
Yeah, but it works out to the same...
No, it doesn't, because if you were hired, you could still work longer, but if you say you have to retire by this date, then you have to retire by that date.
Got it.
So if you were hired...
You're right, you're right, very good, okay.
So what, you see, I'm thinking a little bit.
My brain is just...
It's like if you were hired full-time before 2002 or 2003, it's this. If you're retired, if you were hired between 2006 and 2012, it's this, and anything else, it's the new math.
So what's the this? Like, if we were to go, we already know what the first top two are, because we sort of discussed that ad nauseam, but with the last three, what does that look like?
Well, we don't know, uh...
Maybe, it's either the chart that Michael has here, or it's some variation of the chart, or their grandfather.
Yeah.
Again, this chart isn't based on $2 for a reality work. It's about 10 percent surcharge on a 20-hour wait.
So what about $3 an hour for the tier two, and then down to $2 an hour for all new hirees? Is that outrageous?
No, that sounds...
Say that again?
$2.
$3 an hour for the people who are in the middle, going to the chart.
See, my, my problem is that this chart is subject to active negotiation with the union. So I think we're just wasting our time by trying to adjust the chart up or down, it's going to go through collective bargaining.
Joe, we've already agreed that the majority of us don't want to consider that, we want to move ahead and do this anyway. We've already agreed to that.
So if this chart is based on two dollars an hour. And we raise it to three dollars an hour, what kind of message are you sending? It's goofy to me.
We're goofy.
Say that last part again, Joe, I was looking at it.
It's goofy.
It's goofy to start-
Oh.
Well, I mean, the only thing that would help us do collective bargaining was to change the two dollars down to one dollar. You know, I mean, because then we could say, well, we're only giving a dollar, I mean, it's, when were you, I-
You can bet, you know, that the guys who are within spitting distance of retiring are not, are going to be grandfathered in as well. You're shaking your head, you agree.
He's agreeing.
So-
And we're only going to give this to our ten-year guys.
I don't even think ten-year-
I'm sorry, say that again, Michael?
Eight-year guys, maybe, which is what I'm sort of proposing here, for here.
Well, now, now remember, for a lot of these guys, they have to work, they either have to be sixty-two or over thirty years.
You know, let me just tell you, the biggest thing for our town hall employees, the biggest upset is going to be that they have to work until they're sixty-two or for thirty years. Because everybody here is thinking they're out when they're fifty-five. So that's going to be the biggest hurdle.
Do they know the penalty they take on the retirement, they take eighteen percent of that?
I don't, it doesn't, it-
People don't, people don't leave at fifty-five unless they've got thirty years, it's eighteen percent reduction in the pension.
I wonder if they do know that. Yeah, you know, it's interesting, because I feel like, um, that's the part that makes the, like, the least sense to me policy-wise, like, I understand why the employees feel the way they do, you know, they signed on to a certain retirement plan, but, but for the life of me, I just think fifty-five, our retirement age of fifty-five is just crazy. Like, sixty-two makes so much more sense to me, like fifty-five.
What is our current policy as to when you can retire?
Oh my God, we've said this like twenty-nine times.
Is it what the union contract says now for town hall employees?
What, thirty years pension?
What? Is what a pension-
It's Groundhog Day.
Are you saying the pension, you say retire?
Yeah, retiring with a pension, when can they get a pension?
We don't have nothing to say about that, that's the state of New York. We can't say anything about that, the state of New York says that. A person can retire at age fifty-five with ten years of service. The penalty is huge. You have to be sixty-two or have thirty years of service to trump it. So if I don't have thirty years and I leave at sixty-one, I get a six percent reduction. If I leave at sixty, I get a nine percent reduction. It keeps on going three percent, so if I leave at fifty-nine, I have a twelve percent reduction.
So one of the questions, one of the conditions of eligibility for coverage is they're drawing a pension.
Yes, the New York State Controller insists that that's the case.
Right, so, so that, and that's-
That's the law.
For medical, so that it's-
You cannot get retiring medical benefits unless you're drawing a pension.
Right, so what I'm saying is that we're worried about people retiring at fifty-five, is that a legitimate worry? Because if Michael is correct, that their pension is going to get killed, they're going to stay till sixty-two.
Unless they have a spouse who has a nice pension and other benefits. Because where you do find where a public sector employee will go at age fifty-five without having thirty years of service is that they have a family situation that allows that math to work, otherwise they-
I don't think any of our employees have that, honestly.
Unless they have thirty years of service.
But you know what, if, if, if a board gets elected that tortures them and targets them, and some of these people serve at the pleasure of the supervisor, they'd have, you know, they'd have to go. And to go without a pension, I mean, without healthcare, would be horrible.
Oh, I don't think they should go without healthcare.
I'm not saying that.
It's a question of, yeah, it's just a question. I mean, it just seems, going forward, something has to change, obviously. The question is whether we grandfather all five of these employees.
You know, one employee's only been here for four years, and-
Okay, so why would you want to grandfather?
Can I be excused for a couple of minutes?
Sure, take a, uh, yeah, we'll, we'll keep working in your stead. I don't think that that needs to be considered, there's no expectation of being here for twenty, there's very little, he'll be seventy-
So it's four people?
Yeah.
So let's grandfather the four people and then going forward, change it?
Do we want it, two of the four people only have ten years. Two of the four people cannot retire until, um, one can't retire until 2027, and one-
Twenty thirty-two?
Twenty thirty-six.
Twenty thirty-six? Oh, I see, no, it's thirty years.
She won't, she has to be, I'm sorry, they can retire in twenty thirty, one can retire in twenty thirty-eight and one can retire in twenty twenty-seven. So they're, they have to be sixty-two years of age, or they have to have thirty years in with fifty-five. So, I think that's a different, that they're not even halfway through.
Right.
All right.
What? You don't want to? You want to grandfather, grandfather everyone in?
No, no, I think there may be a difference here where people haven't worked half the time period.
Well, this is, this is assuming that this is when it happened, and that's what I believe.
Well, you want to see all-
Right, this is what they, they hired.
This is full-time, yes.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
She only had sixteen years working for us.
Part-time.
So then less than-
It's part-time, this is when she started full-time.
It's not a ten years.
Right, this is when, this is when they can retire.
Yeah, I think that grandfathering somebody at ten years is too much.
That's what I'm saying, it's another tier. They need consideration, they're halfway there, but not this, like, this is one level, this is one level. Michael, you can give your advice, but we don't, just-
You're about to spend one point two million dollars.
Right, you're not changing anything.
That's not true.
So the last three?
Wait.
You're not changing one thing?
Wait, we're, we're, we're talking about grandfathering in the first two.
Yeah.
Maybe with not paying for spouses, or are we, you know?
No, I said not.
No, you paid for spouses.
Yeah, we did.
I don't think we did, we said before, retiring before 2016, we would. We said we wouldn't change the people who were retired. We haven't decided what we're doing for the people who retire, who are eligible to retire between 2016 and, or who were hired between 1990 and 2002.
So we're saying no spouses, right?
Well, that's not what you said above. Okay, go ahead.
Well, wait a minute, the question is future retirees, are we grandfathering, assuming we just do two people, the rule was always for a spouse. And maybe this leads back to the other discussion about domestic partner, but there shouldn't have been any expectation, because it said spouse.
Right, I, I say that we don't pay for spouses on the next level, but full boat for the retiree.
Fair enough. That eliminates some of the costs.
And those people hired before 2016?
Two thousand and, two thousand and three.
No, no, we're talking about people retire after.
No, but we're doing it by a higher date, because people may want to work longer.
Right, we'll play with the language, but the-
What's the higher date?
Two thousand and three.
January 1st, 2003.
I, I think we're going to confuse ourselves and, uh-
I'm already going to-
Don't try to work on the language, let's play with the concepts.
Well, the concept should be date of hire, not date of retirement.
Because we want people to stay longer, we don't want them to stay on the first day they can retire.
I understand, but if they have already retired, we're keeping the spouse at a hundred percent.
Yes, yes, we're not changing that.
Okay, future retirees, if we're grandfathering, uh, medical, uh, coverage for some people, why wouldn't you keep the spouse the same? And maybe we're talking about nothing, because maybe there will be no spouse, but you could keep the same policy.
I think we decided that we will not, we're paying full boat if you were hired between January 1990 and January 1st, uh, 2006.
It's really before, before that date, you don't care when the, the, January 1990 doesn't matter.
Okay.
There's nobody, unless they have a time machine, they're not going to be able to.
So it's like, it's, 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 okay.
So you're saying, you're saying before that date, they'll get full medical coverage for themselves without their spouse?
Right.
I'm good with that.
Now, we're talking about which category, we got three categories.
This would be, your first category, oh, I think they're done with, that's, it would be a sixty-five retired before January 1st.
Yes, we're good with that.
Yeah.
Okay, and that's full for retiring and the retiring spouse.
Right.
The second one says, for employees who were hired before January 1, 2003, and retired after January 1, 17. The town will pay the full monthly premium of the medical insurance and prescription drug plan for the retiring only, period.
Right.
And for everybody else, it's-
Yeah, I, uh-
So then it would be for those who were hired after January 1, 2003, and retired after January 1, 17.
Right.
Right.
Actually, you wouldn't have to have that after, you just have to, for anybody who is hired after January 1, 2003, you don't have to talk about retirement date, because you know it's about date.
Exactly.
Wait, but retired on a full-time basis or not? Because what are we doing?
Your state retirement system says you have to draw, you have to draw a pension.
Yes, we agreed that it was full-time. We've already agreed to that, so it's anyone-
No, 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 it's full-time, but we have some people-
It's anyone hired after January 1st, 2003.
On a full-time basis after that date?
Yes.
Your eligibility is already up above.
Full-time is already, already in that paragraph we talked about.
Yeah, it gets you where you, the eligibility is. That's why you have to do the eligibility.
They're on a different tier, we're doing a different tier for them, and then this is, he's like a new hire.
Before we go.
When's that?
Before we-
Wait a second.
I want to, I want to revisit my PCA contract.
We're not, we're nowhere near that. Are we doing three, okay, so read what you just did, Michael? Anyone hired after what?
2013?
How did John Gordier get out of this?
He did. We're not taking any action, we're, we're workshopping, and then, he doesn't, he has to be in early, he doesn't have to stay until-
Here's what I want to do with this, is just take that out.
We're not going to have another board meeting until reworked, we need them to cover us, no, no, we're covering until the end.
Yeah, we do, and they, and I want them to do the startup stuff.
I think we got to approve it, and Joe, why don't you just work with him and make sure you're comfortable with the contract?
Let's have him draft the contract.
All right, just, just, just a-
Yeah, but I want to, I want to be able to do it now, because I want to-
We, we got to approve this, you got to give me the ability to sign the contract once you and Alan give it to me.
Okay.
All right, let's just go back and-
You're going to ask them for a contract?
Can we stick to the, we're not-
I'll read it the day I get it.
We're not done with this.
We're with you.
We're getting, we're getting there.
But I want to, I want the approval now, so I can go ahead and tell them to go to start.
You have my approval.
Because we need, we-
Without a contract?
Well, it's just, it's a purchase, we're just going to buy some equipment.
Oh, okay, so then it's to buy the equipment, even if the contract is, we never do a contract with them, we still have the equipment and it's useful?
Yeah.
Okay, where are we?
Okay, pay attention to retiree health benefits, it's so close.
Yeah, we're nearly in it.
Did you let students in your class do that?
To me? Well, I was about their same age, so yeah.
You're a big kid yourself.
Basically, yeah, so it was easy to get along with them.
And you can, you can wear that color, too.
Thank you.
Read what you, are you ready, Michael, or you're just reading?
Yeah, I'm ready, so I'm going to read your, your second two groups, so we have what's we're going to call the middle group. So these are the people hired before January 1, 2013. So for employees who were hired before January 1 of 2000, I just spoke of 2013, 2013. So hired before January 1, 2003, for employees who were hired before January 1, 2003, and retired after January 1, 2017, the town will pay the full monthly premium of the medical insurance and prescription drug plan for the retiring only, period.
Yep.
And the next group, we'll call it the-
I think, yeah, on that one, I don't think that's right, I think what we're talking about is hired on a full-time basis.
That's already taken care of.
We already did that.
Okay, you're saying earlier, it applies only-
This is only the premiums, how much you're paying.
But, okay, so if they weren't full-time, as of these dates, you're saying that it doesn't apply?
Right.
Yeah, I would love you to be twenty years full-time, but it's kind of a, so the next one is premiums, this is hired after January 1, 2013. And there, it reads, for employees who were hired after January 1, 2003, the town will establish a ledger account based on the total number of hours worked for the town. From said account, the town will pay the monthly premium of the medical insurance and prescription drug plan for the retiree only, up to the amount in the account. And then you read that second one, where she, this is an example.
So that would apply to, um, people who became full-time in 2006 and 2007, that they would, uh-
Why can't they use their account however they want it?
Right, they would be subject to this chart.
I thought you were disqualifying spouses.
Oh, correct, all right.
So I took that out. And if you look at this, if somebody's been around for twenty years, and they're, of course, age sixty-two, they're going to have a bucket of money of, let's say they're a thirty-five-hour person, seventy-three thousand, six hundred, on an individual plan, that'll take care of them for a good number of years. If they're sixty-five, they're going to take them very well.
Can we go back to, go back to domestic partners? Why aren't they covered in retirement insurance again?
They weren't before.
They never were.
Because it always talks about spouses.
Even though we passed a resolution?
I don't know what the resolution is on retirees or on actives?
Actives.
No, unactives are covered. Actives are covered, retirees are not. Good reason to be very, very retired.
Okay.
Now, back on first page, I need to take out all this hired before January 1st of 2017, because it covered everybody.
Say that again?
What page?
Go back to part six, page one, six point two point one.
Okay. Changing that to?
Even hires are going to be able to, what part of this?
Six point two point one.
What's the date?
I'm sorry, what are we doing?
Changing one.
Changing what?
Six point two point one.
Okay.
And what are we changing that to?
To match, to, to have-
Actually, I don't need it anymore.
You don't?
I don't even need it, it's going to ruin it. It's going to change the, I mean, we understand that elected officials are not eligible for this benefit.
Highway superintendents are not eligible for this benefit?
The way this is written.
They are not.
In fact, your current highway superintendent would have to be around for twenty years.
One second.
I guess in theory it makes sense, because if you have a constant turnover, can you imagine how many people could potentially be eligible? Just by virtue of being in office.
But it's a career job, so what if we had somebody doing it for thirty years?
I can't really, I don't know of anybody that gets retired in medical, too, they're like, they're pretty long, I mean, at least they grandfather them.
Okay, it's not incurred more than a month.
So the numbering sequence would be changed here, now, the next one, I want to make it very, very clear that I put back in that, no, I haven't, I'm not clear about this. On the part B, are you reimbursing only the retiree or the retiring spouse?
Talking six, two, four?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, for whom?
Are you reimbursing part B? Only the retiree or the retiring spouse?
For existing re-
Just part B.
For ex-
Which part?
For...
Which one of the three categories?
Wait, for exist, wait, Michael, Michael, Michael. Are we talking about, we're only doing it for existing retirees?
I answered his question over here. You don't cover your spouse at all under the next two categories.
Okay.
So what are we talking about, category one?
So we are.
Category one being you're already retired.
Already retired, you already have your spouse covered. So we're going to continue what we've been doing. And if, if you're single, too bad.
Well, even if you gave that benefit to, uh, the grandfather group, group one...
Well, the other two groups, you don't cover spouse at all, so you don't have to talk about it.
Excuse me.
I got it then.
How much of a hit do you take on your state retirement if you go before sixty-two? Eighteen?
The first year, it's six percent. And every year thereafter, three percent. So a quick example, I go at sixty-one, I take a six percent cut. I go at sixty-nine percent. I go fifty-nine, twelve percent. I go at fifty-eight, fifteen percent. I go at fifty-seven, eighteen percent. I go at fifty-six, twenty-one percent.
I'm sorry, it's six percent plus one percent each year?
Five, three percent each year.
Three percent.
So you can see...
So if you go ten years early, it's nine times three is twenty-seven.
So if you go at sixty-five, that's seven years. That's seven, that's six, that's eighteen plus one. It's a nineteen percent cut if you go seven years early.
I didn't follow you.
Seven is six threes is eighteen and six is twenty-four percent.
Oh, really?
Yes.
If you go at fifty-five, you're taking a twenty-four percent...
No, thirty-three percent. That's ten years early.
If you have thirty years in at fifty-five and you don't wait until you're sixty-two...
No, no, on the pension system, they have the thirty-year Trump also.
That's it.
Ah, okay.
That was me.
So we're...
That's why we often come up with a thirty-year Trump for the retiree people because Trump's... I hate you, number eight.
I know you do. I'm saying Trump, Trump.
We should call him Trump.
Yeah, Trump's...
So you get your maximum benefits at sixty-two unless you fall within this exception for thirty years.
Exactly.
No, you're right, it's sixty-two, not fifty, sixty-five.
Yeah.
I did the math wrong.
And that's why some employers that have cut back on retiree benefits, once you get to age sixty-two, they're willing to pay one-hundred percent to get the person sixty-five Medicare. So they'll say, I'll pay one-hundred percent for sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four.
Okay, let's just, let's concentrate on this, what we're, what we're doing. So the first, the first level is already retired, stays the same. Second level is hired before January one, two thousand and three, retired after twenty-seventeen. That's a hundred percent for you for the rest of your life, not spouse.
Not spouse.
Right.
Okay.
That's tier two. Tier three? Is there a tier three and a tier four, or is it just tier three?
Tier three.
Okay.
The chart.
Right.
All in favor?
Okay.
How much are we doing on the chart?
Two dollars an hour is the chart.
Two dollars?
That's what the chart is.
Two fifty?
If the union gets more, we can raise it.
Okay.
That's right.
The, the two dollars, just so you understand, it comes from reason.
Can you tell me, I'm sorry, before you explain, tell me the language you're doing for tier, tier three?
For employees who were hired after January one, two thousand and three, the town will establish a ledger account based on the total number of hours worked for the town. From said account, the town will pay the monthly premium of the medical insurance and prescription drug plan for the retiree only up to the amount in the account. And there's an example listed there. And then there's, you said, "clock, clock," as they say, should you cease the account and cancel...
I just think it's, it's not enough. I think there was the expectation...
And I was going to explain where the two dollars comes from. If you have a twenty-dollar-an-hour wage, it's a ten percent surcharge. Even on Medicare, you only do a seven-point-six-eight percent surcharge. So, and again, I said this in my lectures, I don't know of any employer that would ever agree to more than a ten percent surcharge. I don't know of an employer that would agree to a ten percent surcharge on post-employment benefits.
But these people are expecting to go out with full boat.
Well, they will if they, they work until sixty-two.
No, they won't. They're going to get a ledger account.
Yeah, and if they...
We're talking about, you're not talking about the grandfather employee.
Right.
But again, those employees, if they work for twenty years, they're going to get anywhere from eighty-three to seventy-three thousand dollars in a post-employment benefit. If they work more than that, they can be walking out with a hundred-and-twenty-four thousand dollar post-employment benefit.
Seventy-three is not a lot of, 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 let's look at that. If we're paying now, it's four, it's four hundred for A and D, right? And one oh eight for B?
You're going to pay their full, part B, because you said that you will. So you're going to pay their part B in addition to this.
But is that what, it's four hundred for the Medicare supplement plus one oh five?
No, you're already paying the one oh five.
What are the amounts that we're paying?
One oh five doesn't come out of this bucket.
What are the amounts we're paying now?
Four hundred and five dollars.
Four oh five. Why can't B come out of this bucket?
Because it's not house rent.
Well, can we allow it if we want it to?
If you want to increase this number, I'd say just pay the part B. Yeah, I mean, you can, but that's going against what you're, if you're trying to increase the number, you don't want to put part B in there. Because that's going to decrease the number.
It's four oh five right now for Medicare? Right?
For the supplement, no, Medicare's...
I mean, supplement. And how much for part B? It's like one-twenty?
It depends on who you are. We're using the one oh four.
Call it one oh five. So that's ten. That's five-ten a month that they, that...
But again, that wouldn't come out of this bucket only for a five.
I'm just calculating what they're expecting to leave with. They're thinking that they're going to leave here with...
I'll bet they're going to miss that.
Michael, Michael, don't be, don't be, okay, well...
But they're not, they're not expecting...
Okay, don't, you don't need to argue with me. I'm looking at it from their point of view and seeing how far this will go.
But they're not, they're not letting...
Five-ten times twelve, so it's a sixty-one hundred dollar a year benefit. So if you say that they're leaving here with seventy-three, seventy-three, six hundred divided by sixty-one, that's twelve years of benefit after twenty years of work.
That takes them to age seventy-four.
And then what?
But your Medicare...
Medicare now covers you.
I, I, I don't, I think this is...
But they have to pay for the Medicare supplement.
If they want it.
I think this is, I think this is too, I think...
What if we pay for the supplement?
You are.
Well, we have to...
The supplement is the premium, that's it. That's what you're paying for, seventy-sixty-two, that's what you're paying. You're giving them money, post-employment benefits.
I'm saying we're not giving them enough for the tier, for this third tier.
If they're getting Medicare, why aren't, like, why are they not covered? Are we giving them cash on top of them getting...
We're not giving them...
Medicare doesn't...
We're not giving, wait a minute, we are not giving them cash. We are giving them money to use to their supplement on Medicare.
And they get Medicare too.
So at seventy-two, they have to get like crappy coverage.
It's not crappy.
No, it's Medicare. Medicare pays eighty percent.
Medicare is pretty good, yeah.
Well, so then why are we giving supplement at all? Everybody has it.
Yes, I mean, that's part of the argument.
That's what he's saying.
Eighty percent of your taxpayers all get Medicare.
Right.
I think this is...
Yeah, but they buy a supplemental policy.
Or they pay the twenty percent.
Right.
Yeah, but most, I think most people get a supplement.
I'm just saying that they'll be leaving here with enough coverage, enough money in their bucket after they retire at sixty-two to pay for everything until they're seventy-four, and I don't think it's enough money. I think going from the expectation of full boat to being covered until you're seventy-four, it's not enough.
Why do you think they expected that?
I, I, I disagree with you, though. I mean, I really feel like, I mean, they're covered under Medicare, and I think Michael...
Okay, we don't need to keep arguing about it. I think it's too restrictive. I think it's not enough. Anybody else with me?
Why not? I mean, I guess a part of me feels like I wish there was a way to, like, send out a notice in the mail to all taxpayers and really put this before...
Elaine, this is a notice. We have the meeting here, they come.
You know what I'm saying. I wish people were aware. I mean, listen, I get it, people don't show up to work for the meetings.
I mean, Ed, you're getting your supplement paid for a hundred percent.
Well, yeah, but I have to pay some of it.
How much do you have to pay?
Whatever, like, you know, eighty-five or fifteen, fifteen percent of it.
Ed, I can't hear you.
He's paying fifteen percent of his supplement. And all of your part B?
Yeah, everybody pays a little bit.
Everybody pays part B.
So I have a question. If we, if they're hired after that date, they're now the category three, and they start as part-time, and then they go to full-time. Does the part...
Their clock doesn't start until they're full-time.
Well, let me finish the question. You're talking about hours of service, not years of service in that chart. Do the part-time hours count?
Oh, do they, Michael?
We just put it in full-time size? The total number of full-time hours. It's up to you. Right now, I would say no.
I, that's what I would think, too.
Yeah, I think we're talking about full-time hours.
That's, that's how we develop good software. We don't leave anything undefined.
I don't, I think this is...
It's a hard one, but we have a responsibility to taxpayers, too. I mean, I get they don't come in to be part of these meetings.
Well, the other thing is...
But if they knew, I mean, you know...
A lot of people I talked about say grandfather everybody in.
Yeah, but a lot of people, out of eight thousand, how many are you going a lot?
Well, everywhere I go.
I mean, I feel like it's a, it's a, it's a big issue. I mean, and I'm, you know, I want to...
It doesn't matter, we have to make the decisions, you know?
No, I, I really, but our decisions are partly, at least for me, based on taxpayers. I mean, their, their, it's their money that we're deciding these things over. It's not our money. This is not our personal, it's your biggie bank.
Elaine, who knows what the taxpayers think? Uh, what we do know is the library asked for more money. Taxpayers gave it to them.
Twelve million, twelve million dollar bond for the school.
The school board asked for more money.
Three times to the library.
Three times. School board, so I don't know where the taxpayers' head is.
You know, Joe, a lot of taxpayers don't have health insurance, and they don't have this kind of benefit that they have to then pay for other people. Library people, you know, they, people go in and they get a service. Anybody in the community gets the same service from a library. But you're talking about a lot of taxpayers and eight thousand people. Find out how many of them will actually have health insurance. Who's paying for their health insurance?
But, but here's, here's the flip side. These people were hired with the, with the understanding and... Can I just finish? Yeah, but these people who were putting in the third tier were hired, and they expected to be here for twenty years or thirty years or until they were sixty-two and get their health insurance covered for the rest of their lives.
I totally understand that.
And they thought they were going to stay here for age fifty-five. If you look at your current handbook, it's twenty years and fifty-five.
The only person on this list in that category is John.
No.
I mean, August eighty-five, August, April ninety-nine.
That's part-time, that's when they were hired as part-timers. Look over to the date full-time.
Full-time, okay, gotcha.
Forty-eight hundred a year.
Moving right along.
Are we?
I think you resolved everything except for what's the... I don't know if this says two is too low.
As I said earlier, I think we could raise it, but I wouldn't do it right now, based on Joe's argument, which is we're negotiating with the union.
I thought we said a long time ago that...
We already agreed we didn't care on that, the four of us. We didn't care.
Maybe you can reconsider it on this point, because I, I think the whole discussion is silly. This is, you've made this proposal, let's see where it goes.
Actually, this is the only proposal you made, the two dollars.
Yeah.
Right, so I'm saying, why start interfering with this?
All right.
I think we're going to reexamine it anyway. Probably reexamine the whole thing.
Um, I think we can...
But not tonight.
I think we can pass this at our next meeting.
You've done everything except for the amount that's in the bucket.
Yeah.
Actually, that's it.
I think you're right, and we have to leave it there while we're negotiating with the...
Leave it at two for now.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's a little regressive. I'm really torn about it. I...
Can we go back to this?
Oh, my God.
Are you done?
No, we can't. We're going to get, just, we're going to, we're going to get a revision, and are we meeting one more time to pass this and go over it?
Wednesday is our tentative date. Remember, if we didn't resolve it today, we'd meet Wednesday.
But we're not ready to pass it tonight. I think we all have to read it tomorrow with fresh eyes. We have to think about it. We have to let the employees know, and someone, I'm not doing that alone. I'm sorry.
Maybe we ought to meet on it next, we are, give us a chance to actually read the thing and understand it as to what the words are.
We should, we should bring Kotz in here.
What is the magic about passing it this year as opposed, as opposed to January? Is there any magic?
No.
What difference does it make? It was just one vote.
Well...
I think, because, you know what? I think we can do, I think we can do it. We've been talking about it ad nauseam. There are no surprises in here. Let's wrap it up and finish the year with this done and move on to a clean year next year, where people have had time off and feelings won't be so hurt. I mean, we can't let it keep lingering. That's my take.
I think it's a good idea to get it done, wrapped up.
All right, so when are we going to do that?
We had a tentative...
Fourteenth, at five o'clock.
Good, Michael, we're still on for that?
I have it.
You'll get this to us...
Maybe the five again? Do you need the time again?
5 o'clock.
5 o'clock. You'll get this to us tomorrow?
No, I'll get it here right now.
And you're sending it?
Wow.
5 o'clock on what day?
Don't call me fast Eddie, be fast.
I don't think they call him Fast Eddie.
I guess John has left.
Yeah, he did. What day are we going to do this?
Wednesday.
5:00 PM.
5 o'clock Wednesday.
Wednesday, the 14th?
Yes, it's already.
It's, we booked it last week when we did this.
Okay.
I have time the next week if we want to do it.
14th at 5 o'clock.
Next week.
You want to delay to, I have something to do.
Well, what's the date today? We're talking, we're doing it in two days.
Yeah, we have, we have a tentative for 5 o'clock.
That's, let's stick with that. I don't have time tomorrow.
I've got family next week.
Yeah. I'm away.
I'm away on Wednesday.
Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, the week after.
I've got family for 10 days.
Okay, can we?
I'm freezing. Does somebody turn the heat off in here?
It goes down automatically around this time.
I don't know, I probably forgot to do something. I would like you all to reconsider passing this resolution so I can get them started tomorrow.
I vote yes.
What happened? I mean, didn't we just vote on this like an hour?
Contract.
Just table it?
Contract.
We tabled it, but the problem is we're not meeting again.
It's wrong to table it until the first of the year, and we're hamstrung.
Oh, got it.
Oh, I see.
All right, wow.
Why don't you make a motion and bring it to the floor?
I move Resolution 2016276, second?
I second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yeah, you're going to get an actual contract and we're going to be able to look at it.
Yes, I'm willing to change it to say.
No, 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 you, you, how about pass it as is, and you and Joe look at the contract